Hi friends! Today is Saturday, 12th of March. This week is the week where I have my psychiatry midterms. Yeah, I just thought I would show you. And I also have another midterm for another subject. Today, our tutor sent the article for our summary. We're in a group, but we're gonna have to write individually. A summary of a clinical article. Summarize what it says, and then most importantly, criticize it and discuss it, and write a conclusion of our own. So it implies a lot of research, kind of reading and stuff. The other midterm that I'm also gonna focus this weekend is for my class on... Molecular Mechanisms of Disease. It's a monograph. I don't know if you guys heard what a monograph is. It's not just of an article, but of a subject in general. So I chose a molecule, and I'm going to have to read a bunch of papers telling the state of art with the molecule is, and then a discussion of it, and future perspective. My third midterm, which is another psychiatry one, I'm only gonna be able to do it this week because our tutor didn't give us a patient. It is a clinical history, which I hate. I hate clinical histories. It's the burden of my existence. I feel like I'm good at interviewing patients, and I'm good at talking to patients, but when it comes to writing to paper, I feel like each tutor has a different idea of what is a good clinical history. I feel like it's such a waste of time just writing everything, and so I hate spending a lot of time in it. So I kinda just write as fast as I can, and it ends up having a bunch of mistakes, but I'm trying to be good at it. Also, the discussions of the clinical history, I get so nervous. But that's after this weekend, so I'm not gonna worry about that. Again, this is my last week aside, so I wanted to study psychiatry. I'm not sure how that's gonna turn out because of these three midterms, but I've been doing embossed questions, and it has been helping me. But I have not been studying during this rotation, like really, really at it. For this past hour, I've been looking at kind of the structure of a summary, and kind of doing my own template. It's just a page and a half. It's supposed to be a page and a half. Today has been quite the lazy Sunday. I had a gym class at 9:15, and then I went to get some wet food for Ollie. And then I just napped. I decided that I would not be able to force myself to do work, and that I really needed to rest. And tomorrow, I have the full day off. I mean, off classes, so I could focus on studying. I just needed to catch a break, and I napped. I never take naps, like ever, ever, ever. But today, I just slept on and off for like the whole afternoon. So right now, I have a whole bunch of energy, but I could still sleep, pretty much. I'm also eating dinner in bed. I never do that. I don't feel like moving to my desk because then I'm gonna start feeling guilty that I'm not studying. I'm reading quite a few books at the moment. Actually, I'm reading four books. I really wanted to finish a lot of them this week just because right now, I'm feeling kind of disheartened with TV shows and movies. I just really, I'm really picky. The last movie I watched was Spider-Man: The Way Home. I wanted to watch Batman. I wanted to watch Uncharted and Doctor Strange. But I also want to get new books, and all of these things cost money, and I have to save money, and I have to budget. So today, I just watched YouTube and ate a lot of food. And I've been reading these books. The one that I most invested right now is North and South by Elizabeth Gaskell. This is a 19th century novel, romance. So I was able to do progress in just one of the midterms. I think now, I'm gonna go to the gym. I have to be there at 6. The molecule that I selected ended up being really, really interesting. I love enco biology, actually. I used to think it was so specific and boring, but I've definitely grown to like it, and I'm glad that's the case because that is the whole subject. But I think I'm gonna go now. Hello, good morning. Today is Friday. I only have to go to the emergency department after lunch at 2:00 PM. It is 8:20. In the morning, I'm going to use the time to go to the gym again. Last night, I went to the gym for a body combat class. I actually went early because I wanted to pick up this report of exam that I'm going to show to my family medicine doctor. Today, I have an appointment after my internship, and I'm clocking it that hopefully I can make the trip. I ended up not sending the email that I wanted to send out to my tutor. I wanted to send it Wednesday, and then yesterday, Thursday. And now, it's Friday. I have to deliver it Monday, and I'm gonna send the email like three days early, but at least it's not in the weekend. Anyways, also, I want to set up my premier for my study with me. I'm also late on that. So I'm gonna set it up for tonight after I get back from my consult with my doctor. Yesterday, I've been writing everything down, and I wrote everything in like three ways. Like, I wrote it on my bullet journal. I wrote it on my phone, and I wrote it on my, like, a study weekly daily planner because I am forgetting so much to do. Like, I have so much to do that I forget the little deadlines and stuff. For example, pick up the report. Probably would not remember that. Also, I have to print the signature sheet because I printed one in the very first day. Because I brought it so many times, right now, it's all like wrinkly and stuff, so I wanted to print a new one because my tutor is one of those tutors that signs everything at the end of the rotation. Problem is, I don't know if my printer is working. Please, please. I'm just like begging all angels that my printer is working. I'm just feeling very overwhelmed. Okay, so yesterday, I did write a little bit more of my motograph. I went to the gym. I picked up the report. I planned. I wrote like two questions for the tutor. I just can't wait for these midterms to be over already. It's just so annoying. Okay. Let me check my bullet journal. What should be around here somewhere? Oh my god. I need to organize my desk. Okay. Also, I wanted to watch Batman this weekend, but I'm gonna have to postpone it to next weekend because the deadline of the midterms was also postponed. So on my monograph, I just have to read a lot more. But I am progressing. I think tomorrow, Saturday, I'm going to dedicate the whole day to this because I've just been doing bits by bits whenever I have the time for it. I never really sat down for like a whole day and really thought about it completely. But right now, I am gonna do it. Right now, I'm going to continue. Okay. I need to go. Please, 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 please. Please, please, please.
Guys, welcome to Tech Tips. If you have a printer, probably old, printer, and it's not working, because it... So make sure you put it smoother. This was better. It's slow, too.
They're gonna be there. I have to go somewhere printed. And... Here we go. This is all I wanted. Okay. So I am currently adding references on my paper, and these are the articles. And I've been able to find all of them on Cite This For Me. This is a website that I highly recommend. Just put in the article title, or if you have the code of the article, and it will find people who have cited it before, and so you don't have to do all the work. And if you don't, it gives you the preset stuff, so you can just write it out, and it will give you the references all done. That's how I do it. I know people have other easier ways. I don't know. That's how I cite stuff. Okay, so very, very good news. Been able to structure my work, finally. Now it's 5:30, and I wanted just one more hour to revise and reference, and then another, I guess, to overthink everything until I finally have the courage to send. This is just a title page, and then we were allowed two pages, and as you can see even from a distance, it's extremely full. And I shortened the margins and all those tricks. The last one, the references, which I had to put in small font, and the two figures that managed to fit in. Now, this is what I wanted to check still, which is put all the verbs in the same... Like, have all the verbs match. You know what I mean? Like, not talk about in the present, and then in the past, and then the present again, and then references. Sometimes, I write a sentence, and then I reference it, but then that same information is found in other references. So I want to skim through them and add all those little numbers to the phrases. And finally, do a bunch of rereads so that I make sure that everything is logically sequenced. I think overall, I'm good to go. So I'm going to put another 50, another 50 minutes. And I have my tea here. And we'll just put some lofi in, and we'll be able to finish it in no time. I woke up early because I really want to finish my clinical history so I can start writing the article summary because I have not touched that, and I wanted to deliver everything tomorrow. The good news is, yesterday at the coffee shop, I finished a lot of it, but still, it wasn't everything. So I'm going to type more. Today, I have another simulation. We've been having a lot of simulations. How to expect the diabetic foot to explain insulin shot administration? How to store the insulin shots? What are the risks of insulin shots? And how it looks like, and how they should treat it? Yesterday, we had a simulation on the musculoskeletal exam, so we did it on healthy knees because we did it on one another, but the point is to perform it on someone who presents with knee pain, pain on their shoulder, on their hip, on their back. Today, we have another simulation, which I have not looked at. I couldn't find any materials for it, so I didn't print anything. Normally, we have to bring like sheets of paper, but yesterday, I couldn't find anything on Moodle, so I didn't print anything. Also, I'm so tired at this point that I just want this to be over. Today is at 8:30. We're not evaluated throughout the simulations. We just have to be there. Oh, I think this is it. Wait, I found it. Wait, I found it. Oh. Okay, so of course, the one that I don't prepare has the most material to cover, of course. Is this new? It's not new. So I'm glad I woke up early. Oh, no. First station, interview. Second station, thrower circle. Third station, genogram. Guess who hasn't finished their freaking clinical history yet? Me. Me, myself and I. I'm so tired that I want to throw myself at a brick wall and just lay there against the brick wall, just like smashed. I haven't even started writing the other one, the article. It's just a page and a half, okay? So I'm just leaving that to the last minute. Right now, it's 11:00 and I'm going to go through the whole document the way I'm so tired of this clinical history. So I think I just finished it. Now I have the article to do and I'm feeling okay, I'm doing okay. And I've been listening to this soundtrack. It's The Theory of Everything. It's exactly the exact same length of a study session of mine. So I just listen to the soundtrack like over and over again, from beginning to end. So good news is that the summary is going very well. I already have more than a page and a half. And it's now almost 7:00 AM. I cannot believe I actually worked all night. That doesn't seem real to me because I was just working like 15 minutes in, 10 minutes out. A while ago, I read the article and I wrote down basically everything. And I wrote in blue little limitations that I knew would be important to write in the discussion. I wrote just a few concepts from the introduction and the objectives, my own words. More objectives here. Here are the results, here is the discussion, and here's the rest of the discussion. And so basically, I just had everything done, I just had to write it down. I've also been trying to research with some other articles. I've been able to find this one. I found this one as well. So just some keywords that I wanted to maybe include in my work, but it's going very well, I think. And now, I'm going to have some breakfast and some more coffee before I have to go to the gym because today, there is a special event at the gym. Okay, I'm crazy, but I didn't want to miss this. And it's basically like from 9:00 to 11:00 something, and I'm gonna do three classes in a row. After I get back, I'm going to read both of the papers, just a last read, and then I'm gonna send it. And I think that's a very good plan, in my opinion. But I don't recommend this. I do not recommend this, I do not condone all-nighters. I did this just out of a last resort. My two partners in the group, they already delivered their papers like a few days ago. I'm not even sure if the tutor just wanted it until Friday and I'm sending it Saturday afternoon, but I just really couldn't do it yesterday. I spent the whole afternoon working. I don't want to send it Sunday, so I must, must work tonight because this is gonna take me all night, and it did. But I'm just happy that the article is coming together. I'm glad that I did the notes when I did them because this is just going very, very fast. So yeah, let's just try to finish this. Okay, so I just got home from the gym. It's now 12:35 and I am feeling kind of energetic. I know I'm gonna crash after this. My goal is to send this until 3:00 PM. So I'm gonna have lunch while rereading things and everything, but most importantly, I want to right now finish the summary because mostly, it's written, but I do need to finish some phrases. But yeah, I'm just really happy that I got to go to the gym.